Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special session for October 19th. It's 6:07 and I'm calling this meeting to order. I think I'll just, to speed things up, would you please all rise? Let's do the flag salute and we'll take care of that. Ready, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Braggy, I believe that we have a hearing approval of the agenda.
Yes, President Marcus, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'd like to move items four, C, D, and E before item four A and B.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is everybody approval? Can I get a motion to approve it? I mean, can I get a vote, raise, say aye?
Wait, I, I thought, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, okay. So can I show those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand? Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, it passes five and O with the discretionary vote, with the provisional vote. Okay. I believe that we have one member, one public comment that we're going to let in. Dr. Braggy, you want to let that Ralph Levy in, please?
I'm gonna let him in right now.
Is he there now? I don't know if he's, I don't see if he's connecting. Good evening, Ralph. You're on for your public comment. We're waiting to hear from you, okay?
Okay. So, first of all, dear board members, Dr. Braggy, thank you for having me speak and provide a few insights on my candidacy to this board. It was a pleasure meeting all of you in person during the harassment multicultural festival. This moment has been amazing to share with my family and all of the community present. And yes, I made part of the crepes and the couscous dish for my occasion. The competing reasons for me to join this board are fairly clear. First, my kids have been in BHUSD since they started their curriculum. It is a way for me to give back to a community that gave us so much. It's also a way to use my financial expertise to provide value add, understand and challenge the financial implication on the district's projects. I would also like to add fidelity to the communication process between the board and the parents and explain, not justify, the major policies adopted. I also think that challenges in terms of curriculum, investment, adjustment to the COVID-19 environment are significant. And taking the dimensions of these while providing input would be both an exciting challenge and also an honor for me in order to give back to the community. I'm looking forward to the next steps in the process and wish the board a good continuation in these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph, okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along. We're going to the item number four C, which was the next on the agenda, election of the board vice president. I would like to make a motion to, for Mary Wells to, for the next vice president of the Beverly Hills School Board. I'd like to have a second, if I could.
I will second.
Thank you very much, Noah. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, how do you want to go around today?
Let's start, let's start with you this time, Noah, okay?
Well, you did.
I think you are next, huh?
You started with me on last Tuesday.
Okay, I go, that was, okay, Mary.
I have no comment.
Okay. Eli, Mr. Raymer?
Does this election have any bearing on rotation after? Like on when we have an organizational meeting in November? Or whenever it usually is?
Are you talking about my selection of who speaks first? Or are you talking about the actual election of the organizational meeting?
Yeah, I'm talking about the organizational meeting. Does this election now have any impact on future rotation?
Yes.
No, really, no, because.
I was just gonna say, we just move up. Then everybody will move up when the election is held in the next time. There will be some changes in the committees and things like that, Mr. Raymer. And that will be decided by the members of the board when we have the reorganization in December.
Okay, no, no comment.
Okay, thank you. Mandy?
No, I have no comment. I think that, I agree with that. I think that is a fine appointment at this time.
Noah, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. Because, because this item on the agenda preceded the other two. What I wanted to discuss with the board now is the clerk position and the representative position, because perhaps we might consider dissolving or absorbing one or whatever, absorbing, sorry, is the word. One of these into the vice presidency. So the vice president, let's say, becomes the representative for the county in that the vice president traditionally has really no other job duties on the board, except if, in case of the absence of the president. So at least it would give the vice president, moving forward, something that they're assigned to do. And we can, I, I want to talk about that now, because if we decide to do that, Mary should be okay with it, because she's gonna be taking that job on.
I, Noah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that also involves the clerk job, because I'm not sure what that clerk job is either and who should have that. I mean, those are two jobs that we've really never, I mean, supposedly, I wasn't even unaware of the fact that we had a clerk, or we should have had a clerk. And I wouldn't even know about the, the other, the electing, the, the community job that we're supposed to be selecting somebody for. So I think we can talk about that. And definitely, I agree with you about the fact that I thought about the fact the president, I mean, the vice president doesn't have any quote job, so to speak. And this might be something that they could undertake.
Right. Right, so, so we can move forward with this election now and then move on to the next one. Keeping in mind that we may want to assign this task to the vice president instead of electing a separate person. So we can leave it at that and move on, unless somebody thinks there's something untoward here that I'm saying, but I think that should work out.
I have nothing, I just.
I'm looking to Pam and Jabari, kind of. I'm seeing if they're gonna, you know, smack me upside the head for bringing this.
No, I think. One of the things I was going to recommend to the board, and you can do this at your reorg or your organizational meeting in December, is to make the vice president position a vice president slash clerk. I think what happened, based on my review, it appears the word clerk and secretary became interchangeable. Your, your board policy refers to the appointment of a secretary as opposed to a clerk. I think the, the intent was for it to be a clerk position as required in the code section. You can still have a secretary, so my recommendation, so that you don't have three different positions on the board, would be to have a president position, a vice president slash clerk, and that Dr. Braggy as superintendent be appointed secretary to the board to continue in the capacity he has filled previously.
I go along with those thoughts. Let's go around again. Mary, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, well, I, we're gonna discuss the clerk after we vote now, right?
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Moving forward, yeah. All right, let's call for the question and then we'll talk about it, okay? Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is the S. So congratulations, you are now the, with a vote of five and O, with the provisional making it five, the vice president of the school board. Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask Pam, did you plan on doing business cards for five weeks? Or are we just gonna leave the, maybe just leave the vice part out? And then she can write it in if she has to give it out and then.
All our cards now are just, say, members of the board.
Great.
We start president and vice president.
Okay.
So we're good.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, okay, now let's talk about the appointment of the clerk to the Board of Education. And, and the thought that Mr. Jabari or Jabari Willis just gave us of about the vice president slash clerk, or, and other, any other considerations? Let's start with Mary.
Um, well, I have a question first for Jabari. Can you describe what the clerk does and what the appointment of the clerk means? I don't, you know, I, you reference ed code, so I know that we were interchanging clerk with secretary, but if you could give a description of what the responsibilities are of the clerk?
Typically, the clerk is someone who would sign resolutions and documents in the absence of the president, because in the ed code, there is not a vice president position. So, you know, sometimes these code sections are a little archaic. And so basically, the clerk operated as the vice president.
I thought I saw somewhere where it, the succession was president, vice president, then clerk.
Not in your policy. Your policy doesn't even actually reference clerk. It just references president and vice president, or your bylaw, I should say.
Would, is that in ed code where it's referenced that way?
So ed code just references president and clerk. And each district is allowed to have whatever sort of rotation they vote on. So it's not always an individual goes from clerk to president, because in a case of your district, there is a vice president position. So if you actually had a separate vice president and clerk position, the, the vice president would obviously succeed to the presidency. So I'm not aware of the, the code actually controlling the process of who becomes president. Those are the only positions that you have to appoint someone to at your annual organizational meeting.
You're saying we only have to have a president and a clerk then?
Correct, but you, the, the district has a longstanding bylaw that also has created a vice president.
Right, I understand that.
Well, then it makes sense to me that the clerk and the vice president would be, it would be vice president slash clerk. That, that makes a lot of sense to me, given that information.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raymer?
Um, I did have a question, because I know that Dr. Braggy has been our clerk before this, because I've seen his name on the documents. It was kind of, every time I saw it, I was like, this is interesting. But, um, what was it? The, um, the position of secretary versus the position of clerk would, what would the difference be in making Dr. Braggy the secretary rather than the clerk? And doesn't make sense to, to move away from just keeping him as the clerk?
So technically, the clerk has to be a board member.
Right.
So again, that's, that's why the issue arose from Laco, because they noticed that Dr. Braggy was noted as the clerk on some of the resolutions. So the clerk needs to be a standing board member. And secretary allows Dr. Braggy to also sign documents. And in the absence of the president, vice president, and/or clerk, he would run the board meeting.
And this was a, Pam, you can, you probably have a lot of history on this, but this is not something that I came in five years ago and said, you know, I've gotta be the clerk. It's been a longstanding tradition in the district for the superintendent to be the clerk. So somewhere along that line, it changed, but, but I know that it's been several years before I got there.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Stern, any comment? You're muted.
Dr. Stern, you're muted.
No, Jabari basically filled in the missing link, which is that, you know, I guess Laco said, well, it's a board member who has to, you know, act as the clerk. But then in operation, it does make sense that, you know, Dr. Braggy has been a part of that. So the question then is, is that if the vice president and the clerk position is then consolidated to one, then how would Dr. Braggy then, what he, would he no longer do? Or how would that, how would that function change for him?
Oh, he would be the secretary.
Oh, I see, okay. I thought, I thought Ms. Crushhour was secretary.
She's his administrative secretary, she's administrative.
Yeah, we don't call Pam that.
No, I know, I, we haven't used that word in a long time, but I.
Administrative assistant or whatever we have. We have given her a new title.
Right, but in the parliamentary term. In the parliamentary term of secretary, that is Dr. Braggy. I understood.
Okay.
And that's.
Um, no, I just, I, I, I'm sorry, did you want to say something, Pam?
Well, I was just gonna say that the secretary, you vote that in every year in your annual motions? And that it's Dr. Braggy.
Right. Just, no, to speed things along, I was just gonna move to appoint the vice president as the clerk, which in this case is Mary, since we've already voted on that.
Okay, I'm glad that, and I just want to make one comment, that we're clearing up some stuff that's been sort of hazy, fuzzy for so long. And now we're getting to where we're supposed to be. And I'm glad that this is being rectified, since it's been sort of not being done according to Hoyle, as the expression goes. So I'm glad that we're clearing that up. And so we will, the appointment will be for, I motion to appoint Mary as vice president clerk. So I don't know if we need a motion for that, or we just.
Well, we do, because we have it on the agenda as an appointment for the board.
Okay, so I will.
That's why I'm, I'm moving to appoint the vice president as clerk.
Okay.
And Mary seconded, Mary seconded it already.
Okay, Mary seconded, okay.
Can I ask Jabari one question? Jabari, do we need to change our bylaws to accommodate this?
We will, and then you can adopt, you can adopt it prior to the annual organizational meeting. And then everything will be in place in December.
But we need to get that written up before we, in our next meeting. And it has to be presented at the next meeting, so that we can do it before the organizational meeting.
We could also waive the first reading too and move it along.
Okay, well, I didn't know if we could. All right, Mary?
I, and Jabari, can you confirm again, there's not a by, there's not a bylaw that they have to be separate?
There's not a bylaw that requires them to be separate. Several districts have vice president slash clerk positions. Because again, remember, the vice president isn't a position required by code. So essentially, you're more so attaching the vice president position to the clerk.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
This is Dr. Stern. I, Dr. Stern, you're muted? Okay, thank you, I see your hand.
Yes, the dogs are barking.
Okay, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is the S. And so we will pass this five and O with the provisional vote, making it five and O. Okay, and now we need to elect the representatives of the LA County Committee on, whatever that committee ends there. Pam, I didn't get the rest of that, I know. As a matter of fact, last night at the Malaxa meeting, they were talking about this position and the fact that there is an election coming up in November that someone has to be able to vote, to vote for. So we do have to have a representative to the LA County Committee on School District Organization. Oh, that's where it is. And that's a vote coming up sometime in early November.
Second, second week of November, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay. And we have nobody right now, well, the person that we evidently had is no longer on the board. So it can be, if we want to elect somebody to represent us, I know that Noah has been attending the meetings, as have I, to the Laxa meeting, so.
I would, I would like to nominate myself for this.
Okay, I won't fight with you over it, so you can have it. I'll nominate Noah, and I second his nomination. I would nominate Noah.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mandy. Okay, so we have a first, Mrs. Marcus, and a second is Mandy. And so I'll call for, as any discussion. Okay, call for the question. Those in favor, Eli, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is the S, okay. That position can also come up again at the organizational meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And it should be tied into the Laxa representative too. We should figure that out. Make sure that's in line, because we don't need two of those.
No.
Is that correct, Pam?
Anybody can go to the lax side.
Right, but.
I think all along, I've always put the lax to rep in that position.
But that position should be the laxer rep.
I don't know if we ever fulfilled that position, but I've always had a name in there. So, okay, I, that's how I've always done it. But probably named the same person twice, maybe, at December, we can talk about it.
Okay. There's only so many of us. Okay.
Well, if you hadn't offered, I would have had offered, so that.
Well, you could, you could do.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not in a rush to do things like that. You know me, I, I'm fine, I have no, I have no.
Rochelle and I were at the meeting last night, so.
It was an interesting meeting.
Yeah, they, they interviewed one candidate. There's only.
All of a sudden, though, after, again, right before we turned off, there were six or seven people that wanted to know how to apply for the candidacy. They wanted to know how to go about it.
And this candidate, she was 25 years old, just out of college, and with a board member at the Sentinel Valley Unified School District. So it was very interesting.
Right.
To see that, when I was looking at her, I'm like, is this, is, is she waiting for her parent to come on? Or who is this person?
Yeah, okay. So let's now move to a discussion, the review of the applications regarding the provisional appointment to fill the board vacancy. Now, I know we all have ideas about how we'd like to select them and so on, but right now, it's a discussion. And I'm gonna start with Mrs. Wells, because she's next in line to discuss the review of the application for the provisional appointment to fill the board vacancy. Now, go ahead, Mary.
Okay, well, I'm really happy to see that we had so many people that applied. So I think it was a really great amount of people and, and that we have many options for candidates. So that, that's really wonderful to see. I would suggest that for this meeting today, that we try and potentially do a process of elimination, where we can cut the number perhaps in half to less than 10, since we have 20 candidates that applied. And if we could, maybe, my suggestion would be to have a goal of going 10 and below, perhaps by voting, either by tallying our votes, or, you know, going through the names and putting yes, no, right now, just to come to some process of elimination, where we can get, see, once we do that, how many will we have after our first round of elimination? For the people that you think, you know, that there'd be people that, I would imagine, everyone has certain candidates that they know that they would not vote for, for whatever various reasons, so that we would eliminate those candidates in the first round. If they had two noes, then we would eliminate them and the remainder would continue on and do a process of elimination until we get to 10 or less. And then we interview 10 or less after doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I jump on what Mary said?
Yes.
I had, I had a similar thought, and I'm just, it might fall into just about the same thing. And I think the purpose of this, what should be discussed is, we know we're only gonna appoint one person. We don't want to deliberately hurt people's feelings or talk negatively about anybody in public. It's not correct to do that, it's not classy. And I think that if we, what, what I was gonna suggest is, everybody puts in five names upfront, we'll see what we're left with. And then it takes two people to move them to the next round, and then it takes three people to move them to the interview.
I, my.
Which is sort of what you said about having two people and then three people, so.
I think that my concern, I thought about that as a number as well, but I think then we could be eliminating, eliminating people that you may, in a smaller universe, not have eliminated, and they may then been eliminated. So if we don't all have the same, if we don't all have five people that we, we agree on, more than two agree on, then we may not have anyone to go forward with. It's a small universe. So my suggestion would be, if we first just did a round of elimination, and then anyone that had two or more was eliminated, we'd have more of those maybe yeses in there. And then when they're in that next round, they may be more of a yes, because they're a maybe yes. And you may not want to eliminate them so early on. So I think that this way, we may end up in the same place anyway, once we put. But this way, it kind of safeguards that kind of gray area in between and gives us more options.
The vernacular I would like to work with is, is advancing or moving to the next round. I don't want to use elimination. I'd rather say, who do we want to move to the next round, as opposed to who do we want to eliminate?
I, I agree with that, I think that's, that's great.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Raymer, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I'd like to agree with the previous two board members. I do, you've probably checked on this already, but, Mr. Willis, are we obligated to interview every candidate? Or are we able to strike some now and then have a smaller interview process later?
Yeah, the district, the, the district has full discretion to control the process. Obviously, we are here as part of the special board meeting in open session, so all the decisions do need to be made in open session. So if individuals are, are not going to advance, as, as Mr. Margot eloquently put it, we will need to have the board vote on who is advancing, as opposed to who is not. So I don't know if you want to go one by one and just take, take, you know, note of someone having at least two votes to move on, because obviously, if they don't have two votes at this particular point, they won't have the necessary three votes to be appointed.
Right.
Well, I would suggest that if they, that they only have two votes, that they might, I don't see that there would be much of a chance. I think that they should have at least three votes to move on at this point. I, I kind of believe that with the 20 candidates, we can find candidates that have at least three yeses. And if they have two already, I don't know if that's a chance for them to move on, but.
I, I, I think, though, that let's see what we get and who has the two votes and then decide, because it may be that's the point where board members have to argue for certain people to get that support, to move them forward. So that's what the deliberation would actually entail.
I actually think we should do two votes, are, is, does not advance you. You need three votes to advance, because we have so many candidates. We're gonna be better off eliminating or advancing only those with three. And if we go through the list and see where we get, we should, we should advance with the threes and.
I, I, I agree with that, Mary, but I think it skips a step. I think we have to do one round before we get to the three. I do agree with that, that only those that get three should be interviewed. I absolutely agree. But I think if we just go three right now, it, it leaves no room for deliberation and we, and no discourse, and we, we could lose potentially good candidates. I don't know, you know, we could see, but unless everybody is so adamant right now, because even in our own lists, in our own supportive people, we don't have, you know, we don't, we haven't narrowed it down to one, right? So we need, we need the chance to filter that out. But, you know, it's whatever the board thinks, I mean, I think.
Mandy, can I hear from your thoughts, please?
Um, I think you're right, we want, we want that intermediate, intermediary step, so that there's more discussion. I think you're right, that if we go straight to, you know, who has three votes, then we're not deliberating about, you know, possible people in the middle, if I understand what you're saying, Noah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, let's find out. You know, remember, there might not be anybody that gets three votes in the first round. And then we're gonna have to do it this way. So we can, you know, it's, it's.
I'm also gonna suggest, the psychologist in me, that when we do, let's say, choose someone who does not advance, perhaps one thing we can do, assuming everyone has, you know, looked at the applications quite a bit, is perhaps say, you know, one thing that caught your mind that was a positive. You know, but then say, but, you know, this person maybe would not be the best fit. But I, just a recommendation, because every single person here has something that caught my eye, even though for me, there's only, you know, a couple that really I feel would be the best fit. But just a suggestion.
Okay, well, I was kind of thinking along the same lines as Mary, but if we're gonna, in the order to move this forward quickly, let's, let's do it with the two. And, and then if, then we can go to the three, if that's agreeable to everybody.
And, Miss Marcus, let me just say this, that at the end, when you have your sort of final list, that will be what the board will take action on. You'll, you'll, you'll make a motion to approve what essentially will be a list of however many individuals to move to the interview phase. And so that's what's agendized.
I, I'm sorry, Jabari, can you, I just want to clarify. So if we're gonna do one round.
With two, everybody that gets two votes.
And then we're gonna do another round. And then we're going to do another round?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that.
I believe that's what Mr. Margot is.
That's what I'm suggesting.
That's what he's suggesting.
We could, we could say, we could, we could just go to see what we get, but I think we're going to get a lot more people with two than three, and it may leave some qualified people out. I just don't know if it's, and then we don't get a discussion about it? I don't know.
Right. Um, I, I feel like we're probably going to.
I don't think we're going to get very far with the first round. I think we're going to find out that we're going to wind up with eighteen or at least eighteen, maybe fifteen candidates.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
We haven't really done much of an elimination. That's, that's the way I see it, but.
I want to do two rounds, is, is that?
We'll do two rounds.
Okay, to get to the threes.
Okay.
And then we'll see how many threes we have. Okay.
Okay, so I don't have them in alphabetical order. I have them in the order that they were submitted.
I, I have them in alphabetical order. Do you want it that way?
Do you want to do this? So how will we do this? Are we going to go around and say yes, no, or yes? How do, how are we going to do this?
See, what, what my, what my original suggestion, just for everybody's verification here, is by us offering up the people that we're supporting, then we're not putting anybody down. We're not saying no to anybody. And it, it.
Yeah, that's true.
It prevents us from having to go, like, we're going to each individually have to say no to many of these people. And I don't know if you want to do that, you can if you choose to, but it's awkward and you may not, and, and some of these people we know, we can only appoint one person. So we're going to say no to people that we either like as people, and it just makes it more awkward. But if we were to offer the people we want to advance and say, here's my five, or, or whatever the board decides, my suggestion was five, then, then from that point, then we can see what the list looks like, and then we can look at whether we do two or three.
Well, my suggestion would be that we increase that number from five, Noah, to, like, say we increase that number to ten. So and let's say the ten people we support, and that kind of captures that middle ground, and we're saying yes to your ten that you want to support.
That's fine with me. I don't think we have to give ten, right? We can do up to ten.
Yeah, you may do, yeah, I'm just saying that, then there is kind of like at least some room for that.
Right.
It's your yes, maybe, that you want to support, maybe, or what, for whatever.
Hey, I'm, I'm open to wonderful compromise. It works for me.
Um.
I was thinking the same thing, that there should be more than five. That was my thinking. I was going to go up to about seven or eight, at least.
Well, if, if you, if, if we agree with Mary, you go up to ten, you can put in as many as you want. Personally, I have six, so it's, thank you for going over five. I'm, I'm fine with that.
How about if we compromise and we, we give our, we give eight, and we look at what that universe looks like?
I'm good with that.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Okay, so.
I'm confused. So what if we don't have eight? We should.
You don't, you don't have eight.
Well, if you don't, well, but if you have someone that's, you're not positive that maybe you would support, maybe you would bring them into the eight, so we can have a universe to look at.
Right, like, I have five, that I'd be very happy if any of them.
I'm just saying in this, in the case that we should not have five with three. So I think that way, it gives us a little more assurance that way.
And Noah, can you do me a favor? I have them according to how I received them. You said you put them in alphabetical order. I, doesn't matter to me which way. Can you read them off of your alphabetical, and I'll put mine in that, or I'll put them in that order so that we can go through them. I have Adut, is that first?
Yeah, Adut.
And then what?
Amir Salken.
Okay, hold on.
Amir or Mahal?
Well, Mahal is her first name.
Okay.
Oh, you're just getting last name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She goes by Amir Salken. Okay, next.
Um, Bimel, Bill Bimel.
Okay, hold on, let me find Bill. Okay, I have him.
Uh, Frank Chatchell.
Okay, I have him.
Judy Freed, Judy Friedman.
Friedman. This one in here, that's Friedman, Friedman, Friedman. Friedman, I got it.
Um, uh, Golian.
Okay.
That was number two.
Uh, yeah, number two on my list. What do they do with it? Okay, go ahead. I'll find it. Go ahead.
Howard Goldstein.
Okay. Okay, Goldstein, yeah.
Gabe Halimi.
Yeah, I got that one.
Uh, Nigar Kamara.
Yeah.
Moaz Corzadani.
Mm-hmm.
Corzandi, sorry. Ralph Levy, or Levy, depending on.
Right.
Bridget Lifson.
Yeah.
Judy Manisherry.
Mm-hmm.
Robert Myers.
Mm-hmm.
Sophia Rabari.
Mm-hmm.
Rita Ram.
Yeah.
Aaron Reitman.
Right.
Jason Rund.
Right.
Pamela Singer.
Right.
Marvin Wines.
Okay.
Okay, um, on my screen, I have my list on my spreadsheet, and I have a blank, so I can, if you want, I can keep tallies. Unless anybody has this, that they would like to do that. So as each board member goes through, I can add the, I can add their support for that person to this, and then we can total it up at the end.
To clarify, it's okay if we have less than eight.
Um, it's okay if you have less than eight. Mrs. Wells suggested that to keep the universe balanced, you try to do eight, but it, it's, in the end, it doesn't matter, because if they don't, if you're not supporting them, don't put them in there. So, because that's, that's why, that's what it is. But it's, it's a valid suggestion. Anyway. Okay, so Rochelle, should we start?
We can start with Eleanor Adut.
No, no, no. We'll start with a board member. They're going to give us their names. I'm going to tally. I'm going to keep a mark.
Oh, I don't have it that way. I, okay, I'm going to just give you the ones that I have said yes to. Is that correct?
Yes, that'll be the, that'll be the best way to handle it.
Okay, I have Aaron Reitman.
So you would like to start?
Well, you, you said, I don't know if you want, you want to go through them like that, or you want?
No, did you want to go around from like Eli or Mandy or down the, or Mary or?
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. I thought you were calling on me. I mean, okay, so let's start with.
You're in charge. I'm just clearing it with you.
I know. Let's start with Mary. Mary, do you want to give yours?
Okay, and so we're doing the yeses and.
Yes, just the yes.
I don't have it in your order. I'm just going to read them.
Just tell me, tell me, I'll find it and mark it. I'll just, I'll say that I have it recorded.
Uh, okay, Aaron Reitman, uh, Nigar Kamara, Bill Bimel, Mahal, Amir Salken, Robert Myers, Eleanor Adut, Bridget Lifson, and Judith Manicherry.
Okay, I got those marked.
Okay.
Mandy?
Okay, um, these are in.
I think Eli gets a chance to put his two cents in also. We want, as Eli, uh, Eli, did you have any that you would like to put in?
I do. I have six.
Okay.
Mr. Margot, am I good to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Cool. Um, Gabe Halimi, Bridget Lifson, Bill Bimel, Aaron Reitman, Jason Rund, and Robert Myers.
Okay. Yours are provisional, obviously, Eli, so I'm keeping it.
We'll give them a chance.
But I have it up there.
Okay, Mandy?
Okay, um, Gabe Halimi.
Okay, one second, maybe.
Uh, Frank Chatchell.
Okay.
Uh, Judy Friedman.
Got it.
Um, Howard Goldstein.
Got it.
Bridget Lifson.
Got it.
Uh, Robert Myers.
Got it.
And Aaron Reitman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have, I got to type and look at my list at the same time. I have Frank, Judy Friedman, Howard Goldstein, Bridget Lifson, Jason Rund. And sorry, I have one more. Gabe Halimi.
Okay. My.
One.
My list is Mahal Salten, Judy Manicherry, Aaron Reitman, Bridget Lifson, um, Bill Bimel.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five. That's five, right, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Um, I'm trying to remember who else I had on there. Um. Bimel, Reitman, Salken, Manicherry, and Myers. Did I give you Myers?
No.
Myers. I had only six.
Okay. All right. So from this list, if you would like, do we want to leave the twos and up in and see what we have, see where we're at? If we do that.
Can, can you share your screen by chance?
I can't. But I can, I can tell you right now, if we're going to, if we're going to and up, we have McCall, Amir Salken, Bill Bimel.
Wait, wait, stop.
Wait, wait, slow down.
These are people who got twos?
Twos or, twos or more.
Oh, okay, got it.
Twos or more. Okay.
All good.
Okay, can you start over now?
Sure.
Okay.
McCall, Amir Salken,
Mm-hmm.
Bill Bimel, Frank Chatchell, Judy Friedman, Howard Goldstein, Gabe Halimi, Bridget Lifson, Robert Myers, Aaron Reitman.
Manicherry didn't get two votes?
Uh, yeah, sorry, Manicherry got two. So that took our list from twenty down to one, two, eleven. So we just, we took nine off, so it's a good, that was a good first round there.
Hey. Wait, I only have ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Am I missing somebody?
Possibly.
I have Amir Salten, Bimel.
Uh-huh.
Chatchell, Friedman.
Yep.
Goldstein, Halimi.
Yep.
Lifson.
Yep.
Myers, Reitman, and Manicherry. Who am I missing?
Um, Reitman, Myers, Manicherry.
That's it, nine.
No, there are ten.
Ten, I have ten.
I mean, ten, ten, sorry, ten.
Yeah, I believe it's ten.
It's ten, I apologize. I had a, I had a pencil marker. It looked like a check. Hey, I'm not getting paid for this. Back off, everybody.
Um, so do we want to go, do we want to deliberate and vote again, or do we want to go with the threes for interviews?
If you went with the three and up, you would be interviewing three people.
Right.
Who would those three be?
Yeah, who are?
Aaron Reitman, Robert Myers, and Bridget Lifson.
I'm good with that.
Aaron Reitman, Bridget, Bridget Lifson, and.
Robert Myers.
Robert Myers.
And Gabe Halimi.
I think Mr. Halimi had three as well.
Gabe Halimi had, I counted it two, and then Eli had him.
Actually, there are, there's one, two, three, four. Oh, wait, I'm counting Eli, sorry.
Yeah, I, I still had three. I had Mr. Margot, Mrs. Marcus, and, and Dr. Stern.
For Dave?
For Mr. Halimi.
Yeah, I have Margot and Noah.
Well, let's, let's, let's.
Raise your hand if you're, if you wanted Halimi. Raise your hand.
I mean, it, it could have been a typo on my, my end, guys, so I just, that's clarified. Did you, Mrs. Marcus, did you want Halimi?
No.
No, then it's just Mandy and I, and Eli was the third.
Okay, so it's Robert Myers, Aaron Reitman, and Bridget Lifson.
Up to the board's discretion if you all want to revise the list even further, or would you like to interview the current ten candidates? It's not, um, it's not an, a number that, you know, other districts have not, but if you want to whittle it down, you also have that opportunity to do so as well.
We talked about doing two rounds, so one to see what we got here, and then do another round to get to the three and more to interview.
Um, wait, 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 Mandy, I don't think, what did you say?
So you guys want, do you want, do we want to deliberate and then do this again with the names that we have that are twos and threes?
Well.
Yeah, I think, I think.
And that was the process we agreed on, so.
Yeah, okay. So now we're going to vote on these, and we can vote on.
Well, I, I think to Noah's point, if anybody, do we want, does anybody want to deliberate about any of the candidates that are twos? And then let's go again, or threes for that matter, and then let's go again and, and do another round with the twos and threes, so that we can take the threes. That was the point. That was our discussion in terms of how to.
Right.
They're, they're, sure. Can we go around, or?
Yeah, I think so. Do you want to go, start with each?
All right, let's go in the order that, Mary, you want to go talk about any, or are we going to go around and vote again, or do we go around now?
If we want, do we want to deliberate by name, or do you just want to deliberate? How do you want to, how do you?
Yeah, I think, I think now, if you're, if you're deliberating in favor of a certain candidate, that you would like to move from two to the interview round session, we definitely have to use a name.
Okay, so we'll go, we'll go by name. I, I just need a chance to look at this list that's in the twos. Uh, okay, so I am going to ask about, um, well, I'm not, my others are not even really in twos, so I'm going to pass on to Noah.
Well, I'm going to move over to Eli or Mandy.
Okay, Eli, you'll be next.
So we're going person by person, or we are bringing up?
If there's, if there's anybody you'd like to advocate for, to make sure they try to get to the interview round.
There is the twos.
There is someone I would actually like to, to advocate for, and that is Gabe Halimi. Um, I think his perspective is very interesting in the sense that he was student board member in two thousand, so he's had experience serving on the board many years ago. Um, and he is still, while he has just moved back into the community, I think he, he has a, a a good idea of what's going on, and also a, a good idea of how the board works. So I think that previous experience on the board, even as student board member, would be beneficial, even to just move to the, to be able to interview.
Okay, Noah, you wanted to.
Andy.
Speak to somebody? Speak for somebody?
Uh, Mandy, I'd like her to go.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mandy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. A lot of what Eli said, I agree with. I want to point out, too, an interesting thing about Gabe. Well, first of all, yes, he was a student board member, but not that long ago. I mean, he's about ten years younger than I am. I mean, he still has, you know, he still straddles between older adult and young adult, brings a fresh perspective, but also he was, he actually set up a preschool among, with some other parents during the pandemic. I think that's amazing. I think that shows extraordinary understanding of how administrative things work with children, and of course, children. Uh, he's a, a father of four children. Um, the fact that he was a student board member, he certainly knows how that goes. He's also been very instrumental in moving on some important projects. Um, business-wise, he certainly knows Beverly Hills very well. Uh, he has multi-generally, multi-generations of family members here who've also been through the Beverly Hills School District. Uh, he has multi-generally, multi-generations of family members here who've also been through the Beverly Hills School District. Um, uh, also, I, you know, I'm gonna point out that he did, uh, say that, you know, if it hadn't been for this situation where he's going to have a relatively short term, um, you know, he felt that it, this would be very, uh, a very good fit for him time-wise, because otherwise, he would never dream of being able to do this, because he's so, you know, busy in his real life. So it's just an interesting perspective of someone who was given, would be given a chance for a relatively short term. So that's, that's all I have to say about that. Do I go on about other people that are in the twos, or just, okay? All right, um, let's see. Frank Chechel, um, where are my notes on him? Frank Chechel, he did, uh, he did run, um, and while he did not win, he, he certainly had a number of votes that showed there was, um, interest in, in him as a, um, a potential board member. Um, he is on the Finance Committee for, uh, BHUSD. Um, I know that he is well-versed in not only personal finances, but uh, organizational finances, and, um, thankfully, we seem to be, uh, rather solvent, relatively solvent as a district, but, you know, he really is an expert, um, in this area. He also is, um, uh, a volunteer for AYSO. Um, he has been a COVID compliance officer for AYSO, so I know, and he's a, you know, I'll say as a psychologist, he's a rule follower in the sense that he knows rules, and he knows some of the stipulations that are very central to COVID, and I really trust any, uh, thoughts that he has to say about, you know, holding up the, the laws and conditions, um, regarding COVID compliance. Um, I also believe that he is a, the temperament that would be a good fit for our board at this time. Um, let's see, who else? Uh, Howard Goldstein, um, an amazing, amazing source of knowledge. Uh, also, as you guys know, he was board president. He also not only was someone who went through the Beverly Hills, um, School District, uh, but he had at least, I think, two children, uh, who went through the system as well. Uh, he is a tireless, uh, and committed member. Again, I think his temperament is also a good match, um, for us. And let's see, who else? Um, Judy Friedman, who I actually do not know personally, but I have read about her quite a bit, and I understand that she literally lives about a hundred feet from me. Uh, but I can't, I, I'm not sure of her visually, but, um, I, I like what I read, and that is she is central to BHF. Um, I can't remember what role she plays, but a central role. She's highly educated. Uh, she's educated, she's an attorney, so she's very educated in, in legal matters, um, but she's also someone who appears to be very, um, altruistic, uh, philanthropic. She's been, she's on boards involving, uh, nonprofit and for-profit, uh, philanth, uh, boards. Uh, she's also, she worked for the Rand Corporation. Um, of course, is a, a mom. Um, so those are, those are some of the ones that stand out for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Noah.
Thank you. Um, colleagues, I, I, I urge you to consider allowing, um, these people to interview and move them along the process, um, and, and hear them out. You know, I took the, uh, applications so seriously that my, my wife thought that I was entrenched in a good book for, for several days. Um, the, the case is, as a teacher, when people are, are given something like this, and they're asked a question, I really took it to heart, who answered it seriously? There are people that kind of just, um, put basic, uh, nonchalant answers, um, cookie cutter answers, and there are people that really spent the time answering the question. And if we had to hire people off of the applications, to me, um, uh, Judy Friedman and Howard Goldstein are the best by far on paper. There's, there's no denying that. Um, and the public has the applications, and the public can make up their minds about that, but if you were just basing this on the applications, they really have a solid, solid idea of their role, uh, um, what the board's role is, what the superintendent's role is, what the weaknesses in the district are, um, how to address them. I will tell you, um, I, I have some, on Judy's application, some of the things that she said that stood out is, on, on a daily basis, I see the alienation and disengagement of our children resulting from this ranker, meaning the ranker in the community. She also said that she believes we can focus on efforts on graduating students who are curious, engaged, resilient, and civic-minded, critical thinkers. Um, she thought that the board's role is to act as a thought partner with the superintendent. Um, and even though the superintendent's role is to oversee and execute day-to-day administration of the vision and strategy, the board's role is measure the success of the superintendent. She really, truly, truly understands her role as a board member, having, uh, not someone who served on this board, but it's as if she has, because her understanding of that. So I would advocate for Judy Friedman on that behalf. The other one I would advocate for is Howard Goldstein. I served with him. Um, it should be known that Howard and I disagreed on the single most important vote in the last decade, and that is creating a middle school. So if people think that we're somehow aligned because we've worked together, we actually voted differently on, on that. So it says, it speaks volumes, the fact that we were able to work together and, and even disagree, and that's very important to have on a board, that you can work together and disagree, and still get back together and continue the district's work. Um, um, Howard said that the board has a symbolic role. This was different than what most people wrote. This is why I appreciated it. The behavior the board demonstrates in the boardroom, the rapport amongst board members, and the relationships that members have with the superintendent, administrators, teachers, students, parents, and community, when done appropriately, all add up to a positive climate of public education in a community. He understands it because he's been there and he's done it. And I don't think at a time like this, where you have our, you know, we're kind of have our backs against the wall with policy, with vaccine mandates and ethnic studies, you definitely want somebody around that is truly experienced in handling the management of a school district. And I also really advocate for Gabe Halimi. Um, Gabe, uh, said that he's excited, and he excels in building teams, working with existing teams, and empowering leaders to achieve greatness. That is one of the best things that a school board can do, is empower our leaders, our administrators, Dr. Bregge and his cabinet, to achieve greatness. Um, and he wants to continue the core mission of providing our students with engaging and rigorous education. These are all really important points that these applicants hit on, that a lot of applicants did not hit on, and that they truly, I believe, showed their understanding of the, the, where the district is right now, what the district needs to succeed, and what their role in that would be. And I, I appreciated that greatly, so I am advocating once again for, for Judy and Howard and Gabe Halimi, um, to at least get to the interview round. I think that's really, really important for us, not to overlook genuinely excellent candidates who are willing to sacrifice their time and serve this community in that regard.
Oh, okay, um, Mary. You want to, you want, right?
Yeah.
You wanna have anything? Okay, um, I, um, having gone through all of the applicants very carefully, uh, and I have no objection to bringing a few of them back if necessary to interview them, but I, uh, I cannot, I, I'm just gonna let you know that, uh, I know that Howard has been on the board before, and I am not in favor of him to come back to the board. I know that he would be a very, he, he's got the experience and everything else, but he, there are some things that happened before with me, and I cannot vote for him. So this is more something that he said when he left the board, and something that happened when I ran for the board. So I have a very negative feeling about that at this point, and I, I, if you wanna bring him back, that's fine, but I, I cannot.
We have to vote. Uh, we have to vote. So, a vote of three or more.
Say pardon?
It's a vote of three or more that advances.
Oh, okay, so then that would be the one. I, I don't know Judy, um, Judy Friedman at all, and I read her i- i- interview and her application. Um, Gabe, as you know, was a former student of mine, so I know him well. I would not, I would not be objectionable to bringing him back for a third, for, to give him a, the vote, so that if he needed to come back for an interview, I would be willing to do that. I think he gave a very good, very positive. I'm a little bit concerned about, um, the, the, um, he, he seems to be someone that would make a good fit, but that sometimes there's some things there that disturb me. I'm just being very in, very honest. Um, and so I, I, I also wanted to, um, I thought Bill Bimal might be a very good one to bring back. I don't know that he got enough votes, uh, to bring back. I didn't see him's name on, was his name on the list again, Noah?
Uh, yeah, he had two.
Oh, he had two, okay, so then I, so, um, uh, so tho- tho- those are mine. I mean, I understand that, um, I thought that Judy Manicherry made a very, very strong application, but I, I understand, uh, that, that she may not be able to make it, so, uh, I, I would love to see her interview, because I'd love to see her on the interview itself. I think she would do a very good job. So I'm just advocating for those, uh, I would be willing to go with Gabe Halimi if it would take him to get to three. Uh, but, um, I, I, I'm not in favor of Frank Chechel. Uh, and, um, oh, and, um, Mahal Sultan, I'm very much in favor. I think she did a very strong paper. Okay?
Okay. Um.
So we go through and vote?
Well, we can, we can, um, I can bring up the people who have two to see if anyb- anybody different wants to be a third to bring them into the interview.
Well, who are we interviewing so far? Were we interviewing Erin Wrightman?
No. I.
And, and Robert Myers, is that correct?
Okay, well, the process we talked about, we do one round, and then deliberate, and then we would vote again.
Right.
List of those that were two or more, and then we would, so we'd do the second round, which we would now do, and then if we have, we would advance those that were three or more. So we would go through all the names, or you would go through your names, uh, each, like, but like we did the first time, my suggestion is, is that we then, of the names that we have, you would say those that you want to advance is my suggestion.
Right. Right, and, and, and just remember, colleagues, we're, we're at ten people that have two or, two or more, and the idea is, we're gonna try to cut it down a little bit more to reduce the interviews, um, and we can see if that happens or not. So we can do one of two things. We can take, out of this list of ten people, we can, um, go through each one by name, and then we can see how many board members support this person. Okay, or, or we could.
We do it the same round way we did it the last time, of this universe.
You, how many?
How many will you advance? How many do you want to advance? So that's my suggestion.
But now they have to get three votes. But now they need to get three.
That's correct.
Okay.
So in this universe of ten, um, you would say who you want to advance.
Okay, does everybody have the list of ten?
No.
Okay, here, I will say it one more time.
Okay.
This is the ten that has two or more.
Well, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't.
Does everybody else, does somebody need it?
Should we go over it just to be sure?
Yeah, we have, um, McCallamir Sultan, Bill Bimal, Frank Chechel, Judy Friedman, Howard Goldstein, Gabe Halimi, Bridget Liffson, Judy Manicherry, Robert Myers, and Erin Wrightman.
Okay. Yeah.
We got those?
Yeah.
Just for everyone's edification, Bridget Liffson was the only one that was unanimous for all of us. Ironically.
Wait, Erin Wrightman? Erin Wrightman had three.
That's correct. We're doing the universe of twos and.
Yeah, I didn't, I was, I was saying, we're doing two and up, Mandy.
Yeah. Yeah, two and up, sorry, not to eliminate.
Now, do you, do you guys wanna take the ones that already have three or four off?
No, I think we should revote. It's another round. So it's the universe of ten. So you vote on the, take your ten to advance. Of these ten, who do you want to advance?
All right.
I, I, uh, wait, I, I don't agree with that. I think that if we already have some that have already advanced, I think we should now consider the ones that did not advance that were two, and see if we could add them to this.
So then, we list the names of those that are not three or four of the ten, so we know that that's our universe then?
Yeah, all, all, I, it'll be easier. If you have the list in front of you, just, just take off, um, uh, Bridget Liffson, Robert Myers, and Erin Wrightman.
Bridget Liffson.
Robert Myers and Emma.
Yeah. And.
Erin Wrightman.
Okay, so I, so I, so do I start?
But how many names are we allowed to put forward in this round, or are we not gonna, uh, provide a limit on how many people each board member can support?
I don't think there's a limit. You can, you can ban.
You can sort as many as you want.
Of the list of the universe.
Well, now it's seven.
Right.
Right.
So I would advance, should I go, or should I?
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
All right. Um, I would advance Judy Manicherry and Mahal, Amir Sultan. Sorry, I'm going slow. Bill Bimal. And the others are already threes or fours.
Okay, um.
Eli?
Eli.
Um, of those that have not received three or more, I would like to advance Bill Bimal, Gabe Halimi, and Judy Manicherry.
Okay, Mandy?
Uh, Gabe Halimi, Judy Friedman, Howard Goldstein, and Frank Chechel.
Okay, um, I'm gonna put, um, Frank, Judy, Howard, Gabe.
Wait, say which Judy. There's two Judys.
Sorry, Judy Friedman.
So Frank, Howard, Judy, Gabe?
Gabe Halimi, yeah. Rochelle?
Okay, and I'm going to go with Bill Bimal, Ma- uh, Mahal Sultan, and Judy Manicherry.
Okay, so nothing changed then, from, they all still got two votes.
Okay, so we have then to advance for the interview, um, Robert Myers, Erin Wrightman, and Bridget Liffson.
Yeah, I have to, colleagues, I have to say I disagree with that. There should be more people being interviewed. The people that are being interviewed do not have experience. Um, there are people that are more experienced, and, and they're not getting a chance to interview. It seems like a backwards process.
What, what could be the harm of interviewing ten people? I mean, is it time-consuming? Maybe, but.
No, we, we could take the time.
I mean, I don't think ten is that, you know, that ridiculous. We can really get, they say, as psychologists, they say thirty seconds, you form a first impression. Obviously, we'll do more than thirty seconds, but I think ten is a reasonable number for interviews.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna have to.
At that, and I think when we're going to interview, we should be narrowing it down, so that from that interview, we can pick out, so I, I seen a reason why we can't maybe interview five, maybe five, and then become that, we can narrow it down. So if you wanna.
I would like to keep it smaller, because we're picking one person, so that we can spend time interviewing. I, I really feel strongly that, um, you know, I, I mean, originally, Noah, you did agree with the process, um.
Right, but I, I didn't think it would yield three candidates that, where there's more candidates that I believe are better qualified. I can't, I, we're gonna vote for this in a minute, and I can't support these three.
Right.
Only moving forward. I, I, I think other people deserve a chance to be interviewed.
Right, I mean, the point here is to, is arrive at a consensus for one, at the end of the day, we wanna have consensus amongst all of us for one candidate, so, um, I think that, um.
I mean, Rochelle, you had mentioned Gabe Halimi. Would you still support him being interviewed?
I would go ahead with let, let him be in the interview. Yes, I would, I will push him forward on the interview.
Well, let, let me just say this as well, just in terms of your, your action item. If your action item is not approved, then you're back to your, you default back to the twenty applicants, and you would be interviewing all twenty. So.
Right.
Just keep that in mind.
So from, from that standpoint, for the, you know, like, expediency, and I would probably pick one more, um.
Well, can we just think for one second? I mean, I, I think that, um, that, um, moving forward with five seems like it would be reasonable for me. But can we just have a minute to look at our list before we just jump ahead? Does anybody mind?
Yeah, you can, um.
Like to look at the universe of, uh, who the candidates we're looking at.
I've got another. I've got another question. Mr. Margot, is there anyone out of the seven that we just revoted on that did not receive two votes? That received less than two?
No, everybody got two.
Was it seven that we didn't, that we didn't come to? It was, uh-
Yeah, there's, there's, I have seven with two votes.
I don't know. I feel like, how would we go down to five?
We could limit each board member to two or three votes, and then they cast that for one, uh, or for three of the seven. And that would prevent the, everyone from getting the same number of votes.
Of the seven that we just chose?
Yeah, so we would do another round of voting where each board member was only able to vote, cast their vote for three of the seven.
That would cut, that would cut it down, and maybe that will then be our, even if it's still twos, it would still be a good list.
Yeah, because I feel like just throwing a name out and isn't giving everybody that was of the seven a fair opportunity to be considered. So I think it should be more formal as Eli is recommending, so that we can consider of the seven. So if we want to say of these seven, like eliminate, I mean-
Just pick your top three.
Yeah, pick your top three.
That's fine with me, because then hopefully from-
The seven mean being Mahal, Bill Baimo, Frank Chechell, Judy Friedman, Har- Howard Goldstein, Gabe Halimi, and Judy Manicherry. Those are the seven?
Yes. So pick three.
I need to make, I need to leave for one second. Can you give me five minutes, two minutes? I need to do something, okay?
Sure. Can, so list the seven for me again. I'm so sorry.
Mahal Amir Salkin, Bill Baimo, Frank Chechell, Judy Friedman, Howard Goldstein, Gabe Halimi, Judy Manicherry.
Gabe Halimi and Judy Manicherry. So we picked three of these?
Seven, yep.
Who did I miss? Read it again. I'm so sorry. Mahal, Bill-
Mahal, Bill, Frank.
Oh, Frank, I missed Frank. Uh huh.
Both Judys, Judy Friedman, Judy Manicherry, um, Howard Goldstein, uh, Gabe Halimi.
Okay, got it.
Um, we can actually, Mary, if you want to start, we can start, you know. This is actually an example where the president stepped away, so feel free to take us through until she gets back.
I just would like one minute just to look at this list because we're gonna pick only three. Um, I, I would like to go with Bill, Mahal, and Judy Manicherry.
Okay.
But we did that last time, I think.
What did we all decide?
Uh, we're just going around with three. Just pick your top three now.
Out of the, out of the ones that were the seven, right?
Out of the seven, yeah. Uh, Mary just went, so Eli, do you want to?
Yeah.
You only had three. You're gonna keep the same three or?
Yeah, my three are, are Baimo, Holimi, and Manicherry.
Okay. Mandy?
Um, can someone sell me on Mr. Baimo a little bit? Does anyone want to tell me a little bit about their thoughts?
Um, go ahead.
I, I, I met Bill at a tour. Um, he's a nice guy. He just, for me, he, he doesn't have the level of experience um, that other candidates have. He actually, he was on my maybe list. So, um, I, I, I just, I feel that there, I'm, uh, there are candidates for me that are clearly way more cut for this job. So that's the only reason why I haven't advanced him on my list. And he is on the COC right now.
Yeah, I know that, um.
But he's relatively new to the district. He's on, this is his second year back, or here, I should say. So there's not, there's not a lot of institutional knowledge either with the candidate, uh, who hasn't been in the district for a while, because by putting, you know, you don't have to have a child to be on the board, but it gives you a certain point of view and an experience that other people don't have.
Well, he has a child on the board. I mean, I'm sorry.
No, he does, he does now. He does now, but I'm saying he didn't have a child come up through, you know, elementary, middle school.
He moved here from Florida, I believe.
Yes.
Right. But he's been on the COC and he does seem like he's, you know, he's been involved since he's been here, and he does have a child in the school, and he's an involved parent. And I think that he's bright and he could, um, you know, he could hit the ground. I mean, I, I think he could be dedicated to do the work.
Now, I recall William Baimel, one of his comments in his application was in, under improvements, it was to improve teacher pay. So, an interesting, I mean, I, I think we're competitive with teacher pay benefits. We need to, you know, explore. Um, anyway, I do remember that now. Um, I'm gonna remain with Gabe Halimi, Judy Friedman, and Frank Chechell. Those are my three out of those seven.
Okay, and I'm gonna stay with Judy, Howard, and Gabe, and Rochelle.
I'm gonna go with Sultan, Halimi, and Manicherry.
Okay, so colleagues, what that does for us, and I think this is a great way to, to maybe wrap this up, is it gives, it gives, um, three votes to Halimi,
Free to Halimi, yeah, go ahead.
Two votes to Mahal, two votes to Judy Friedman, two votes to Howard, and two votes to Judy Manicherry. So that's five more people. I'd be okay interviewing eight people. I think we should, I think that's the best way to move forward because we're kind of at a stalemate here. And I, I, I think eight is fine. If we want to, we could do four on two different days so we don't get overwhelmed, or we could do all eight on a day. But I'm, I'm willing to accept the list of eight. I think we cut it down from 20 to eight, and I think that's good work and good compromise for all of us today.
Those eight be, sorry, interrupt, could those eight be restated, please?
Yes, they can. So, um, McCall, Amir Salkin, Judy Friedman, um, Howard Goldstein, Gabe Halimi, Bridget Lifson, Judy Manicherry, Robert Myers, and Aaron Reitman.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, right.
I'm not sure if, uh, another round of voting is the option, but if you, we didn't want to do eight, then we could again bring Halimi up and then from the remaining, uh, six, no, from the remaining four, from the remaining four, then have two votes, but I don't think anything would change.
Right, and I, and I think, I think there's qualities to the rest of these that are worth interviewing. So I'm, I'm happy. I feel that there's a compromise. It was clear from the beginning that there were people that, that the board was kind of split on. And, and we're at, we're very adamant about both of our candidates that we're supporting. Uh, we all are, and I think that's great. Um, and I think we can move forward and advance these eight and vote on them, and uh, uh, we can move on, uh, for the rest of the evening and-
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'm okay with that. I think we, I think we, we've done, I think we're as far as we can get without the interviews right now also. I think that
Right.
the interviews will make a big difference and we can, and I think that we're going into it. I think we've given everybody a fair chance. I think that it's, uh, you know, as far as, uh, who, uh, I just want to remind every, I mean, I know that this is taped and it will be open. I mean, people can watch this at another time, so, just, uh, I think we did a good job, and, um, I would like to talk about speaking to any of the candidates from the here on in, the ones that we will be interviewing. Uh, I think that we need to talk and we can, in, be all together about not speaking to them or not having anything until we do the interview. I was wondering, so that-
Absolutely, you're correct. And I thought that we had decided once the application came in-
Well, I know, but now we're, now we're up to the interview, so I still think that we should have, there'd be no communication with these people.
I agree.
Will it be, uh, when will it be public knowledge about these eight?
Well, they can watch, we're gonna vote on them. We're gonna, we're gonna vote on them right now, Mandy, and when we vote on them is that they're going forward. This is the app, the, uh, this is, uh, item approval, selection of the applicants to proceed to the board interview. So we're now going to list these and vote as a group uh, on all eight.
Before we vote-
In the meeting. Uh huh.
Before we vote, I, I wanted to ask two questions. Um, one, one is, um, once we've decided on how, who will advance, um, when will we, um, when do we want to try and target for when those interviews would be? Would we do, do we want to do them all in one sitting? Do we want to break it up into two sittings? And as well, um, when will we meet to discuss how we will interview and what those questions will be? So that we're not kind of going in asking, um, if you're available on Tuesdays? As our interview-
I, 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 yeah, I agree. Um, I, I think we could, at the next regular meeting, we could have this conversation next Tuesday about the interview process if we want. I think, Michael, our study session on Thursday is very overloaded, right? We don't want to tag anything onto that.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't tag anything onto that one.
Okay, so I think doing that, and then we can set, we can give direction then on Tuesday as well to set the interview times. So-
Away and to set the times then?
Yeah, because I think then the following week would be the, probably the best week to do the interviews. So the first week in November, and then we can make a decision, get them appointed. We have to have them appointed by, was it November 21st?
Twenty first, the number-
So that gives us a lot of time.
It does. I am going to a wedding, so I'm gonna be gone on a Friday in November.
We usually don't meet on Fridays, so don't worry.
No, I mean, if we end up doing it as a special meeting-
Oh, wait, can I, I've got only seven names on my list. Can you go through them again? I'm missing somebody.
Yes. Um, McCall, Amir Salkin.
Wait, wait, Mahal Sultan, yeah.
Yeah, Judy Friedman.
Yeah.
Howard Goldstein. Gabe Halimi.
Gabe Halimi, uh-
Bridget Lifson.
Yes.
Judy Manicherry.
Yeah, oh, wait, I, that's, I, that's the one I didn't have. I had Judy Friedman, okay. Judy Manicherry, okay. And then Gabe, and then, uh-
Robert Myers and Aaron Reitman.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So does that work for everybody? We can hash out the rest of the details next Tuesday? And then set the times and-
Well, um, if we hash out the details, we have to do it in open session, I believe.
Right, but we're not talking about any people at that point. We're only talking about process.
And questions, right?
Yeah, because I don't know. I mean, can we discuss, it's not, is it on this agenda to talk about? Really, the, the actual interview process? I don't really see it on there.
On this one, it was a provisional appointment to discuss then review the applicants to fill the, and the next one was the selection of applicants to proceed to the board interview. So what we have left, left now is to have the, the interview proceed to the interview. And that we have, we have to have, I don't know if you want to have a meeting, if we have to have a meeting about that, which I guess we will. I don't know how long, I mean, about the questions, you know, one of the things that we need to be very careful about is that the, the questions that we ask and the way you have to ask them and who asks them has to be discussed, and they have to be asked the same, in other, you have to use different questions. You have to keep the questions pretty much the same.
I, I, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's policy. I think different candidates have different experiences and skill sets that you would want to question and talk about. I don't-
Well, I think there have to be-
This is like, this is, to me, this is a job interview. You have to, you have to get to the heart of the substance of each candidate now, and-
I think there's certain questions that can be that way, Noah, but certain questions would have to be, as you might suggest, but I think there are certain questions that can be asked that would be the same for every candidate.
I, I agree, Rochelle, on that. I just think everything I kind of want to know was in the application, unless we ask them to elaborate on something in the application. But if there's something else, then it might be, but yeah, we can, if there's a question that we think is good for all candidates, I'm great with that. I'm just more interested in really getting into the candidates and getting to either know them and understanding them on issues and all that stuff. I think that's, um, and, and leadership qualities.
And of course- To your point, you all do not have this on your agenda tonight, so it would be something you'd bring back to the, to the next agenda, and you know, we can provide you some template questions, but you ob- obviously, as the interview goes, there may be some additional questions for each of the candidates that may be, uh, applicable. But obviously, there, there will be a set of questions that you will want to ask to each of the candidates so that you get a sort of across-the-board answer. And so I'll make sure I provide something to Dr. Braggie so that you have something in advance of, of Tuesday's meeting.
I think we should probably do that then at the Tuesday meeting, Dr. Braggie, when we set the agenda.
Yes, and so I just have point of clarification for tonight. Um, I think that's the quietest I've ever been in a board meeting in my life. Um, so just because this is the selection and, uh, this, uh, actual meeting will be, uh, as soon as we're finished, I will upload it, uh, and then share with, uh, Romeo Carey, who then will, uh, put this on the KBEV YouTube site. So the question I have, since this is about the selection process, um, and the board will be taking action on, um, moving the selection process to the interview phase, um, is there, uh, someone on the board that would like to communicate with the, uh, with the people that, uh, the eight people that are moving on to the interview, or, uh, is it the board's preference, uh, to have these candidates find out through the video replaying?
I, I think-
I think it would be nice if the president or, uh, well, I hate to say this, maybe someone reaches out to them from the board and, and notifies them that they are going to be in, interviewed, and they've been moving on to the next round.
I think it needs to be one email to all candidates at the same time.
Okay.
So that way, everybody has, we're notified at the same time. If we do it by phone call, then not everybody's gonna get the same time.
I think, I like the fact that it's not a phone call also.
Okay.
And I would, I would recommend that, uh, the email addresses go into the, the BCC column so that, um, people aren't, uh, trying to figure out who else. It should, if it goes in the BCC column, then it, the only person that that knows who's on that list is the person that's getting it.
Although, that's true. The only thing is, is that they can watch the show, to watch this and find out who it is after anyway, Dr. Braggie, so it's not gonna make that much-
Yeah, no, I just think that by sharing, you know, people-
Oh, I, I agree, yeah.
Email addresses is not something we-
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
So, so Rochelle, do you, do you want it to come from you and you send the email?
Yeah, I will send out an email and, you know, and I think we also said, do we not send out to the other candidates also and-
We have to, the others, because they're gonna start saying, hey, hey, wait, I didn't hear, I didn't hear. What did, what happened?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Only appropriate-
Just, I, what I will do with them is again, the same thing. I will send them a thank you for their application and, um, some sentence that will tell them that they, whatever, okay?
I, I, I would suggest that they, and if it's possible to try and send them all, you know, at the same time. So one right after the other, so it's not, there's not a gap.
Well, if I BCC them all, they will all get it at the same time, because when I BCC it, everybody will get it.
Yeah, you, you, if you send it to yourself and BCC all eight of them or all 12 of them, then they'll all get it at the same time. And you won't have to worry about.
Right.
That's the easiest way to do that. So, that being said, um, President Marcus, can I make a motion to approve the selection of the eight applicants to proceed to board interview?
Yes, you may.
That list, I will, I-
We have to give the list.
I'm gonna give the list. Don't be so second happy. I think it is. Uh, those eight include Mahal Amir Salkin, Judy Friedman, Howard Goldstein, Gabe Halimi, Bridget Lifson, Judy Manicherry, Robert Myers, and Aaron Reitman.
Okay.
And for those watching, I do just want to say that I appreciate all 20 people that applied to step up to serve your community is the gracious thing. Um, and we can only choose one, but hopefully there's an election next November, so please keep us in mind. We'll always be here.
Thank you. I agree with Noah, and I thank everybody for taking the time to make the application.
We have to vote, too.
Oh, well, okay, well, all right.
You still need that second.
I haven't got a second. I'll second the motion. Mandy second. All right, moved and seconded by Noah and by, seconded by Mandy Stern to, uh, uh, send the following eight names to, then they're listed, uh, on for the interviews for the school board, for the provisional opening on the school board. Okay? Uh, Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Stern. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
That's a dog yes, I think.
Yes.
Uh, oh, yeah, there it is. Okay, uh, Mr. Margot.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. So, uh, it passes five and O, the fifth, uh, the fifth vote is provisional. All right, anything else that has to come before the board? I don't think so. It's now seven thirty-seven. I want to thank everybody for their time this evening. I think we did a good job. I think we'll all be very happy with, when we go forward with the interviews. So with that, I'll say good night and thank you, and I'll be sending out a note to them. I'll be working on it right now, so I'll talk to you soon, okay? I, 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 um, wonder if you guys would like to also be, BCC'd on it also.
You know, I would be, because I think it might be a good idea in case, not, not any, anything that you would specifically do, Rochelle, but if there's like an email that's bounced back or whatever.
I, I agree with that, yeah.
You know, I just don't want anyone to say, well, I never got any email, and I mean, that'd be.
I agree with you, and that's fine, Mandy, and I, I thank you for that comment. I was thinking the same thing, because I'm gonna be pulling them, I'm pulling it off of the, uh, application, so.
Right, but it's sometimes I, I, I can mistype or whatever, yeah.
Rochelle, can I recommend maybe, including all of us, you don't have to BCC the board. I think you can CC Dr. Braggie and the board, and BCC the candidates.
I can do what, did you say? I can.
You could, you don't have to BCC the board. You can CC the board. We're, we're, we already voted on this. It's.
Oh, so you want to CC the board, okay.
CC the board and Dr. Braggie, and then to the rest.
Okay, I got that, all right.
And, and if you need any help with the letter or anything, feel free to call any of us.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, I'll start to work on something. I may pass it by you and Mary, and see what, if you have any corrections, anything you might like me to say, okay? Okay.
And, and, and we're meeting on Thursday at what time? Just to remind me, sorry.
I think it's.
I think four.
Five?
Five.
Five, okay.
Five o'clock.
I think.
I just want you all to know that it's my husband's ninety-first birthday that night.
Wow.
Wow. It's a good thing we have a vice president in case you're parting too hard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be on Zoom, uh, but I will be available on Thursday.
Okay.
Is that, it isn't supposed to be on Zoom? Aren't we supposed to be in person, though?
Yeah, it's in person, but.
It's in person, but I have to Zoom, because I might be in between appointments.
I understand, I understand, okay. All right, I'll see you all Thursday at, and I might be talking to some of you, okay?
Thank you.
Here, bye-bye.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.